The United States. The Republic. Fans. The nation. And that is the world. The day of justice.
I'll start by reading the school committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education. Before we start with public comment, I just want to introduce our, one of our new student reps tonight, our Marcus Domice. He is our CTEI rep and he'll be joining us at all the meetings throughout the school year. Tyler couldn't be with us tonight.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Great. All right. I'd like to open up the public comment. Like to come speak, up to the microphone. If anybody online, they can unmute. Second time, anybody want to address the committee? Third and final time. Close the public comment. Communications?
Yes, there is one communication this evening that you've just received when you sat down. It is a letter from me to the school committee announcing that I am retiring at the end of this year on June 30th, 2020. It's time. And give it over to some young buck. Maybe it's you.
You're right, Marcus.
Yeah, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I just want to say thank you to everybody in this community and to my team and to our staff, who have gone on quite the ride the last six and a half years. Been an honor. We have a lot of work to do this year, so my commitment is still in place until June 30th. And then at that time, I hope to be able to help with a seamless transition, whatever the district needs to stay on a steady path. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know there'll be more of this, but thank you. You led us through some difficult times and we can talk more about that later.
Yes.
I know that we will work with the chair on getting a committee going, putting it out. Do you have a report?
I do. So this, get your pens sharpened because it's time. Time's going on. First and foremost, I just want to make it the announcement that freshman open house at LHS is tomorrow at 5:30. This is a key day for students and families to come in. Staff will be here, administration will be here, talking about schedules and moving about the building, helping with that transition. It's a big move moving up to the high school. This is a big place with a lot of people. So I'm going to encourage our freshman class, which is over 500 students right now, very large class, to take advantage of this if you can. It's open, so just come in and formally meet people. Just try to get your feelers out. Make sure that you stay involved. It's a great opportunity. Next Monday, the 28th, is teachers' first day back. This year, we're doing things a little differently. We're having all staff report to their buildings and we're going to work day one. So that we are all prepared and confident to greet all of our students on Tuesday. That's grades one through 12, Tuesday on the 29th. Our kindergarten, our littlest people, are joining us on Tuesday, September 5th. So we're extremely busy. Enrollment is quite high right now. Secretaries just started back last Monday, so we're still trying to clean up the database. There was a request about enrollment numbers. I'll have that for the next meeting, but there are some things that need to shake out at this point. People that are withdrawing, people that are still moving in. Our pick center is nonstop right now. So I will have all updated numbers at the next meeting on September 5th. School supplies, hot item, very hot item. All of the schools have all the school supplies that students will need for this coming year. We started back in the spring last year, talking with business manager, Mel Michaels, administrators and staff. And one of the things that we felt was a barrier for some students and really created inequity was around school supplies. You know, Melissa, you have four children. We're down to one in the public schools now, but when you have that many children, it's really expensive. So we, all teachers had said, you know what, we're not sending home the traditional supply list. We're going to take care of that. And also, instruction has changed. We don't use as much paper and pencils now that every child has a device. So everything is in a balance. So we have purchased whatever faculty need, whatever students need. The one thing I would encourage families, if they can, is to get a sturdy backpack. I'd rather them take the time on that. Those backpacks become property of the students. It's theirs. They own it. It's almost like a little security blanket. If not, if you're, we have extra backpacks. It might not be the preference, but we do have backpacks. There are giveaways all over the city. I mean, just go online. So we're going to take care of the school supplies from A to Z and hope that we can remove any inequity for any child. So we want everybody here ready to go on Tuesday. Bus routes will be posted soon. We still have our app, which was well-used last year, really supported communication for parents. Just took that nervousness down, like where's my child's bus? Where's my child? You know, the first couple of weeks were very, very slow, so your child will probably get home a lot later than it says on paper as we start to practice those routes. And the bus drivers, they learn very quickly. They move faster and faster. But the app, First View, will be reposted. Everything has been wiped out. Everything has been wiped out. So every parent that wants it again has to re-enter and we will have a new code. We'll send that information out once we know that the database is clean. But we had, no, 2000 last year that had taken advantage of it, and it really helped slow the phones down either in the morning or in the afternoon. So that is coming your way as well. Once again, for Lemmonster Public Schools and across the state, breakfast and lunch are free this year. So that's a wonderful, and hopefully someday that that's not even a statement I have to make. So I'm really proud that we're doing that one. Yes. And next week, I will be sending out another app, and this one comes from the Lemmonster Police Department. It's a new app on your phone for 411. It's an anonymous call-in for incidents, whatever. You know, we always say, if you see something, say something. This is a very easy tool. You can download it. It's free to everyone, and we want to encourage our families to take advantage of it. We will send out all of the instructions. It's very easy to do. And if there is something that needs to be reported, or if you're just questioning something, they encourage you to please use that app. So that information is coming out. And last but not least, we are staying steadfast with some, with a strong focus, number one, on attendance. We have children for 180 days and we need to move mountains. We constantly have to move mountains. So whenever possible, we really want our children's daily attendance to increase. We understand that there are family obligations, things come up, and that's fine. But whenever possible, please have your child in school. High-quality instruction and materials are throughout the district still. Teachers have been engaged in professional development all summer. It's been very busy with professional development. We had administration in the last couple of days. They're exhausted. They've been doing mathematics like nobody's business. So teachers are ready to go, and that will occur also throughout the year. Behaviors, positive behaviors. We're going to continue with our code of conduct, building a bridge and an understanding of what the expectations are in order to be in Lemmonster Public Schools. We want students ready and prepared, well-behaved, and focused on what is important when you're a child. And last but not least is safety. We continue to invest in safety this evening. Josh Willridge will speak about a safety committee that has been formed, and he's joined the team to help communicate the efforts around safety. I'm looking forward to a great year. I think it's going to happen fast. Summer flew by with all this rain. Let's just say it's not snow yet. So let's just get ready. It's going to be very, very busy, very, very fast. So we're ready to go for next Monday.
Thank you Superintendent. It's already super busy.
It's super busy.
Anybody have any questions about the superintendent? Great. Let's move right into presentations. We have a summer school.
Yeah.
Week, some of them, we had more in the first week, that kind of thing. I think we definitely were, we had more of attendance and better attendance not starting the 4th of July. So that was a big eye-opener for us. The four weeks after, consistent, it was really well-attended. We had about 225, 250 specialized, in the specialized programming for pre-K through 12. Our credit recovery was very successful this year. We had no seniors that had to attend. That was a big thing for us because usually we do a little graduation at the end, but all seniors had completed their requirements. We had over 70% of the students be successful and receive their credit recovery, so that's great. Lot more than we've had since the pandemic. So we were excited about that. Creative choices, an average of 155, 150 kids came weekly, but anywhere up to 180 on certain weeks. So they were very busy. Their summer was a little rough with the rain because they had a lot of outdoor activities. So we tried our best to add different activities in there. And then the school and the pool kind of put a damper sometimes on closing early the last two weeks. In the high school level, it's all about just getting our students to work with each other and communicate with each other and share ideas with each other and be eventive, which is really important as we keep moving our students forward.
The buildings were full, 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 full. Yes.
Didn't matter where you went. They were full. So, and we appreciate.
Summer.
That was one of our parents who volunteered.
Building. So thank you for everything that you coordinated. Thank you very much. It was great work this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Hello, everybody. Welcome back. We have a brief update, safety committee that we met a couple of times. It was the summer. Two meetings held with members of Lemmonster Police Department chaired by the mayor. I lean Griffin was at one of the meetings. It was at the other. I have some data to hand out. We'll get to that in one second. Just go through some of the bullet points to the security position posted over the summer, at the beginning of the summer, that is in the process of being filled. So we'll have a security liaison to work directly with Assistant Superintendent. We'll do a lot of the work that the Assistant Superintendent was spearheading, but also under his direction, I would imagine, so as well. So that's, that's good for us. It's been a renewed relationship with the probation department. We're in Pittsburgh District Court, thanks to Chief Kennedy with the Lemmonster Police Department. Discipline was discussed at length at both meetings. And renewing that relationship with the probation department will give the schools more options. Rather than try to solve every problem in-house, they will be able to lean on probation at times when appropriate. And the following one, tip line, as discussed by the superintendent earlier. I'm going to hand out the data. Made public on Massachusetts Association School Committee.
That's the website. Department of Ed.
In the packet, you'll see school year 2022, 2023 in white. If you flip through, I believe it's the third page or fourth page in the packet. The blue page is 2021, 2022 school year's comparison. Some of the bullet points that we'll just kind of go over. The attendance. Attendance is getting better. 2021, 2022, they had attendance policy violations to the number of 444. Following school year, that was down to 169. There's been some considerable efforts to work towards that. Drugs, excluding alcohol, tobacco, also to exclude the vaping, which we know is an issue in the school that we've discussed at the meetings. That's going to be probably a constant topic going forward. There were 60 total offenses in 2021, 22. That was down to 29. Following year, bullying, 34 offenses that were dealt with with disciplinary action. 2021, 22 school year, that was down to six the following year. We can tell that the schools are really doing a good job in minimizing some of those cases. And I think with, I don't think, I think it's probably Safety Committee-wide believes that with that 4-on-1 line, we can get to the root of any other cases that we might not know about. That would be hugely helpful. Second page goes into threats and intimidation. Tobacco use, kind of covered that one. Vandalism, 46, down to 45. Room for improvement there. Weapons possession, nine, down to eight. So we could see comparison that there has been a lot of headway made with these issues. I know a lot of us had concerns last year, and I think being on this committee is going to be helpful to make sure that we can bring those back to this group, discuss it as a larger committee. One of the other vital announcements that the committee talked about was the school resource officers. There'll be three new school resource officers this school year. They've all attended training. They're all seasoned veterans of the Lemmonster Police Department. And they're going to work hand in hand with the superintendent's office, Assistant Superintendent's office and the new security position and the probation department when needed. There'll be two at the high school and one to cover the middle schools, but the high school resource officers will float and cover the middle schools as needed. So there will be coverage throughout the district. If anybody has any questions on any of the things that we discussed.
Just a, just a quick one. When we're talking about the safety committee, we're talking about the, like a police involvement, not necessarily like a fire, emergency management, special ed, like all those pieces. Is it police and schools?
Yes, but to fully answer your question, I believe that the new position is going to actually focus on some of those other areas for school safety. Through the training that the Assistant Superintendent, I believe with homeland security, right? That, that new role will focus on those things as well. So there'll be discipline, there'll be school safety, but then there'll also be the planning to, you know, facility, facility safety concerns too.
And a lot of it. This is, this information is important. It doesn't scare us because the absence of data would scare us if people aren't reporting. So for those people that are involved, we can report so that we can work on this. And then I think we bring the next level is the safety person getting involved with operating with management and all the other people for patient. I already have the roundtable discussions that we do, and then we replace a half of 34 people in 10 years. Yet, some news comes on, like, you know, the experience of them, why are we doing this? As I said over and over, every year's reasons, we're responsible for every kid when they're here in our school. 6,000 kids dropped off, you buy bus, they walk, or, you know, parents drop them off. We're a job today. Things are going to happen. Anybody that thinks you're going to have 6,000 kids anywhere, even getting ice cream without some sort of an issue, they're going to happen. I think what people look for is parents to go, how do you handle this? They handle it fairly, it looks square. It's a good job. What are my tools? What can I do legally? What can I do? But it just can't be tolerated. So what we need to do is work. So the new year starts. They didn't say things on the news, all of us. And then information can spread within seconds, right, within seconds. You know, show, huh? But this is, you know, you see it. So it's just kind of circling back to what we've always done. But every somebody is a good person for creating with all of those other agencies, certain parts of, and we already have them. Systems in place, training, partners already have. Against a parent, it's school. Want to make sure, you know, they're okay and systems are in place. And then if something does happen, you know, we're going to act swiftly and fairly. That's what, that's all people can, it's only expected, it's like, you know, it's never had that before. Thanks, Josh. We talked probation. It's not a bad thing, some things to be on probation. At that age, patients, they have resources that we can. Oh, yeah. Which is what somebody might need.
The other report. But we're not going to share, like, they're free, but they're not going to share like every little detail of every little safety feature because we need it to be safe. And so we want to work around that. So I wanted to, so I just want to give the expectations out. That we are on top of things. Sure that everything's safe.
Any other questions?
So thank you for joining us in those meetings. I think it's been very helpful.
All right. Assistant Principal Interview Committee.
Sure. And I don't need an answer tonight, but as you know, Mr. Steinberg has taken a job right next to his house in Lowell. So when he came in, it was, you know, when they're waiting in your office at 8:00 AM? You know, that's not a good conversation on a Monday morning. But we're, I mean, we have to be happy for him. It's great for his family. It's great for him. He's still working with us, just winding up a few little pieces, but the position's already posted. It's quite a bit of interest. Renee Koska will be heading up an interview committee, and so we'd like to have one member of this committee join the interview team. I think it's a conversation for you to think about. You can tell Dean. Dean can let me know who he thinks best to be a part of it, and then Renee will be in contact, but that will happen pretty quickly. Right. We were able to move one of the assistant principals from Skyview over there. He's over helping out right now. Luckily, those teams were in good places. And somebody from the district office said, well, I'll go and backfill for him right now so that there's not a gaping hole. So all spots are filled, but we will interview and then make an announcement after that. So we're moving forward. Okay? So if you could just let Dean know if anybody's interested, and then he can let me know.
All right. Pro of the minutes for June 5.
Any questions or comments, areas of missions? Not all in favor? Opposed? And then again, this is a good time for us to reemphasize what discussions we have with the superintendent about if there are employees out there who work in the system, and they're seeing themselves as people who might want to work their way through the system and to let us know. Don't keep it a secret. If, maybe if it is in this position, but there's something else down the road that they're interested in, and they would like to, you know, take extra courses or specialize in those areas, by all means, let us know. We've had good luck with, you know, with, uh, you know, organically recruiting people within the system. And, but if we don't know what your career path is and what your interests are, it's much good to us, right? So let us know, share it with superintendent, the building manager, whoever it is, that, uh, HR, whoever's out there that. Okay, we're going to move on to subcommittee meetings. Are there any subcommittees that are met? We're going to meet.
All the corrections and changes in elementary, middle, and high school. Um, our next meeting will be on September 5th, um, at 5:15. We hope to, you know, have everything, you know, some recommendations. And so that's kind of where we're at with that. Um, on a side note, the, there's three of us from policy, who's, uh, superintendent's evaluation. So we will be preparing those on, on Monday, and we're reporting back to the folks, yeah, there.
All right, busy. And then finance update. I know Melody didn't spend any money all summer, but if you have a, if you have a few items, you know, here and there, a few paperclips and poppy over at Staples, little things. Did all of our work get done? I mean, everything that we contracted over the summer, repairs and carpets and, yeah, okay. But for the most part, things get done. Okay, good. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the following warrants. First is warrant 48 that totals $2,613,776.04. Warrant 49 that totals $144,613.09. Warrant 50 that totals $8,381,751.66. Warrant 51 totaling $924,357.39. Warrant 52 totaling $4,192,665.27. Warrant 53 that totals $1,058,086.25. Warrant 54 totaling $552,778.87.
Eighty-seven cents, just.
Sorry, I might, might have said backwards. And warrant 55, uh, totaling $116,932.70. From grants revolving, we have warrant 48 that totals $258,331.49. Warrant 49 totaling $36,467.92. Warrant 50 totaling $1,140,907.22. Warrant 51 totaling $194,139.96. Warrant 52 totaling $386,450.21. Warrant 1 totaling $57,890.31. Warrant 2, $279,693.87. Warrant 3 totaling $13,913.79. Warrant 4 totaling $454,238.61. Warrant 5 totaling $330,269.63. Warrant 6 totaling $904,858.62. Also from grants revolving, warrant 1, $68,048.40. Warrant 2, $331,782.17. Warrant 3 totaling $391,876.25. Warrant 4 that totals $315,203.27. Warrant 5 that totals $5, uh, $58,012.70. And warrant 6 that totals $314,350.15.
Still looking for that two cents from last year. All right, you heard the recommendation. Is there a second?
No, second.
The second by Eileen. Are there any questions or comments about any of these revolving accounts, appropriations from last year, closing out the year, or the new calendar year starting in July 1st? Any questions? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Yeah.
Straightforward, we actually had no adjustments necessary. So what we voted on, we're back to the same. Is what we're putting in.
Someone, the state passed their budget, and they finally, governor signed it. There was no additional funding in there, not a penny, not, not, not two cents, not.
They were pretty good to us this year.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's fine.
We vote. Originally budget, uh, originally voted budget, uh, at $62,431. $26,431. Now, when you're, as you are.
How many times I'm going to not least the number that Melanie just said.
All right. So we'll vote on that first. Um, any questions? It's the exact same we passed. All in favor? Those opposed? Second would be for expenses. Twelve cents. So only off 10. Second by someone, by Ron, and then.
First second, we're all good.
We have two seconds. And we're in the appropriate blue, so we'll, we'll give them both credit. So, um, we, we don't have any questions at all? If not, oh, yes, go ahead. That's okay. Is it budget related? Last, we'll do this first, we'll vote. All right, all in favor? Those opposed? And then, um, crossguides? Is that a separate? Okay, all right. So this is a net school spending, but, all right, there was a question, Alyssa. Yeah.
Caution tape up and everything. It's coming down.
Those, yeah, those are coming down.
They're just disconnecting.
Yeah, there's power lines. They want to make sure they're, they're involving all the cities.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up.
It's funny, I thought the warranty was still on. We bought, I thought we bought, I thought we bought the extended warranty. What the heck? What year was that? Hey, CTEI built the other ones at Fallbrook, right? Didn't they build those? Yeah, they built those. They built the addition over there. You know how you get out towards the kindergarten, and then you take a left?
Yeah.
Yeah. They weren't puddles. That's an actual building, right?
To, to take them down?
Oh, it shouldn't be a lot. There's no asbestos or anything. Yeah. Don't you have a tractor or something, man? Shaw?
It won't take much, looking at some of them.
Let the termites have them. Yes. All right, Melanie, thank you. There's nothing else?
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're going to move on to, uh, obsolete, speaking of obsolete, we have obsolete equipment. You saw, yeah, you saw pictures and everything in here, right? Anybody have any questions about any of this? Okay, motion to declare a surplus in a second. All in favor? Okay, and then we have, um, warrants. Vote on the 2024 budget and acceptance of a donation.
Yes. Can you accept that?
By Eileen, and a second by Shaw. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. And then HR report. How, how are we doing?
Yes. You say it's lengthy. You can read it, you're leaving it. But we're in good shape.
This year seems better from what I hear. It seems better for hiring bus drivers. Everything seems a little better than last year. Knock on plastic.
Yes.
Yeah. Bring them in for Fitzwilliam. All right, um, let's see. Uh, the Fallbrook project update.
I was thinking, we're, we've been meeting, where are we at?
It's a very, very, it, it, the only way to explain it is it's like taken the wrong way. It's like going to Florida, but you really wanted to go to Maine. And so the process is just, it's, my opinion, it's, it's, it's there to make things move slowly because they don't have the money for the projects. So they get you in, and you're like excited because you're in, and then there's like multiple steps. We don't even know what project we're working on. We don't know if it's demolition, we don't know if it's expansion, renovation, we don't know. But it's all part of the, it's a long boot camp to get to the point where, okay, now we know it's, it's, it's a project. That's all we know. And, um, and so, but contract, you know, the people that we've hired to, to help us with it, understand it, and, um, and it, it's, so we're probably, you know, we're at like step one of many steps. So, but it's in progress if anybody asks.
They created a website, so if anybody wants to follow it, that's going to go up. You can see the meetings are posted. We're getting ready to get into the interview with designer. This might be interesting. Uh, they had a walkthrough last Wednesday. They walked through Fallbrook, and 10 companies came through Fallbrook, all highly interested. So, uh, the people that are helping us through this process will be vetting that work so that bring a select amount of designers before, as before we start interviewing, we're going to be all 10 if it's viable. So hopefully we get moving.
Do the designers determine that, like, you, you know? So we pay for designers and then they.
They have to design it all, all of the options.
They, they have to design actually all the options. You're absolutely right. They have to design, um, a tool, tear down, they have to do a renovation. That's a tough thing.
Like.
High school did a expansion.
Just like expansion. So they have to plan all of that. And it goes back to, I think, MSBA's to put in to decide which. So it, it feels long. And speaking of long, do you have enough data?
It, it was between, uh, the, the athletic director and we're ready to go.
I was ready to go out to bed.
Yeah, I mean, we're ready to go. I went to look at four different fields, and I hope to see one that was similar to ours, you know, with the same terrain.
Yes.
And all of them were outside the school, but flat, like, you had to do some grading. No one has the same, like, cut and fill situation that we do. So we're, to be out any second, it goes out the bid. Greg's just waiting for it as soon as they, all the details are there. And, and again, we're, we're, we've got 10 million budgeted, and we're hoping to do whatever 10 million will cover at this point. And then later on, if there are things that we have to do later, we'll rough things in, and we have to add things later, we'll add things in later. But in the meantime, um, everyone's sharing space and fields and soil works. And, um, we got vans outside, so that's a good sign. Buses, so we need to move students around temporarily we can. But there, there's some companies that have just gotten into building fields now. That's all they do. And they get in, get their job done, and they get, and they're all quick. They do a good job, and it really has become a specialty. So hopefully just as many of them will show up to bid on this project as we had walk through Fallbrook, so.
We're looking to do artificial or natural?
Artificial, oh. Well, we're beyond the life expectancy because they take good care of it. The salespeople said the same thing. We expect that we're going to sell you another one, you know, but still, still getting use out of it. So, so how you care for them. Okay, thank you, everybody. And now we'll move on to, uh, are we going to have an executive session? Okay. All right. So then I'm going to ask if there's any older new business before we close out. So otherwise, we're going to.
Goodness, I know Chris has been asking about people going to the MLC, I strongly urge people to attend. It's a great.
What's the deadline that you need to know, Chris? The early bird special. All right, I'll give you a, I'll give you a yes or no by the end of this week. How's that? I try to go every, it's just a really busy time. January or February is like a really good time to have it, but nobody wants to have it. It's a tough time. Right? Ron, if you don't go, those people get upset. I know. That's what I'm saying. They count on you. You're going to go, Josh? Okay, there you go. Signing out. Quick. All right. So we are going to go into an executive session. We will not be returning, and we're going to start with Mr. Ron because this is a voice vote to go and take his executive session. Yay?
Yay, yay.
And so, um, who's coming in? The, the city attorney, who else?
There you go.
Oh, that's it? Mark, just you? Wow.